No, we're not.
Good evening, everybody. No, we're not. This is Barbara Griffin. This is the Goshough Town Planning Board. Today is Tuesday. It is November 17.
Seventeenth.
I'm a little off on my date because we normally meet on Thursday. This is Tuesday. I'm going to think tomorrow is Friday all day long. We are here because last Thursday we had a meeting and we were not able to proceed because the electronics that we have set up for this was not working. We have it working tonight. So we will be proceeding with our agenda, which is exactly the same as it was for last Thursday night. Before we do that, I need to read some information in regards to the fact that we are doing this meeting, part in person, part by phone. And we are able to do this in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004. That is what gives us the authorization to meet electronically. You can be here physically at Town Hall or call in. We have provided telephone access for the public with additional access by video or other electronic means. To participate in this meeting, dial 766-5646. That's area code 603. And use the participant code 785645, followed by the pound sign. We have given public notice of the access information for this meeting. And if anyone has a problem with telephone access, please call 660-5000. We will adjourn the meeting and recess it to a later date if, in fact, that happens. And that is how we are here on a Tuesday night. Votes tonight will be done by roll call. Anybody wishing to speak from the public will need to hit star nine and the operator will recognize you. We have previously gone through everybody online. So I think we have everybody there. If somebody signs in while this meeting is going on, hit star nine if you want to be recognized when we're considering a particular application. Before beginning, I'm going to ask everybody in the room to identify themselves and then I'm going to ask, go through board members and staff who are attending by telephone. Joanne, you want to start, please?
Joanne Duffy, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Galbraith alternate and recording secretary.
My name is Barbara Griffin.
Tim Redmond.
Online. Phil, have you checked in?
No.
Okay. Peter, are you there?
Peter Gorgantus, Selectman Rep.
Thank you. Kimberly.
Kimberly, please.
Thank you. And are you at home?
Sorry. I'm at home and I am alone.
Thank you. Jim Raymond.
This is James Raymond. I'm actually at my office, so I'm very much alone.
Sarah Wardy, Town Engineer. I am home, but not alone.
We hear. Have a nice evening with her. All right. We have a couple of action items, which it's, Tim.
We should make sure we appoint Gail as voting member tonight in Phil's absence.
All right. Before we get to the votes or any application, Gail, you can be the voting member. We have some action items that we normally do first. We are going to skip those and go right to the first item of old business. This is an application for map 25 lot 27. This is a completeness review, request for relief of the outer 50 feet of the wetland surface water conservation district buffer to allow the owner to construct a 798 square foot addition to an existing home by adding an attached garage with rooms above and expand the existing deck and stairs and also allow onsite improvements to the property by restoring an area of the existing pavement to a pervious vegetated state. The property is owned by Scott Buckland and it's located at 115 Danus Park Road. It's zoned R2 and water surface wetlands conservation district overlay. This application was actually before us on September 24th, but was not actually accepted. Joanne, is this application complete?
Yes, it is.
And are there any regional impacts?
No, there are none.
If I could have a motion to accept as complete, finding there's no regional impacts.
Make a motion to find this application is complete and ready to review with no regional impacts.
Tim, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Peter, second.
Peter, I'll second.
Peter, second sit. I'm going to call for the vote. Gail.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Tim.
Yes.
Peter.
Yeah.
Kimberly. James.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Were there any waivers requested?
There are no waiver.
All right. Joanne, you want to bring us through the background and what approvals this applicant has?
So the owner of the property would like to add on, in addition to his home consisting of 798 square feet, which would be an attached garage with rooms above. This would include an existing expansion of an existing deck and stairs with an overhang. And because they are all situated in the outer 50 feet of the wetland surface water, no, I'm sorry, surface water buffer, not wetland, from the Piscataclog River, he does need to receive approval for a wetland setback. This Conservation Commission was concerned about this application and scheduled a site walk. I believe two members of the planning board joined the commission at that time. We do have updated comments from the commission that they voted unanimously to recommend that the board grant the relief of the outer 50 feet and that their concerns have been addressed.
Is our review limited to the concerns in regards to the area of the overlay district?
Yes, specifically to the extension of the home itself.
Okay. And are there any issues that you think the applicant needs to address at this point in time?
No, not unless they would like to just follow up with, they've amended their plan and they've done everything the Conservation asked for.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions from board members before we hear from the applicant? I'm seeing none. So at this point, I'm going to welcome the applicant and ask them to identify themselves. Am I getting an amended plan? Or is this an addition?
I want to make sure you do have it.
Is it stamped?
It's a little larger, I think, maybe in your packet.
I just, hold on. I just want to make sure it's the same because this has a date received stamp on it.
It's dated, the plan is 10/26.
Last revision is 10/26.
All right. So the received 10/28 is the same.
Yep.
I would venture to say, but I wanted to be sure.
Okay. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. Welcome, David.
Yeah, there we go. Perfect.
All right. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening. Good to see you all again. So.
I'm sorry. Could you just state your name for the record?
Indeed. My name is Tim Pellican. I'm a licensed lands surveyor. My company is Promised Land Survey. Been around for approximately 23 years. Have not been to your board a whole lot, in and out, occasionally, but we'll see.
Well, look at that. You got to be before us twice with one application. There you go.
So the other permit that has not been mentioned is we do have New Hampshire NHDES Shoreland Protection.
We got a copy of that.
Application. Okay. So I just want to be sure that you know that that has been secured. That was originally submitted earlier this winter, earlier this year, and actually was rejected by Shoreland Protection. So I just want full disclosure that we always get comments from DES, I would tell you, when we do Shoreland Protection applications. In this case, it was just a flat-out denial. So we're like, okay. And so we tried to appeal it, repeal it, but basically we couldn't fight it. All COVID hit, everything else, everything went awry. So we basically made some amendments to our application after talking to a DES reviewer and made a submittal, a pre-submittal, to say with this work, we're asked to make a few more revisions. Then we submitted along with our fees again and secured that approval this summer. So that was done. Then it was time to go to your Conservation Commission before we came to you. We came to your Conservation Commission, had a meeting. There was a lot of talk about this site and history and other things. And so a site walk was organized and we attended that, came back to another meeting. The next meeting that we came back to, we made significant changes to the plan, much more stringent than what even DES required. I can go through those step by step as you may want, but the fact is, is Conservation Commission was complimentary, I would tell you, to our plans and for us making the changes that they requested and thought it was a good project all in all. It was a give and take. We were taking some impervious surface off there. We're putting impervious surface down by the river to protect. We're putting many plantings up and all in lieu of just trying to get a small addition onto the house so they can expand their bedroom and their decks, all outside of the 50-foot setback that is controlled by Shoreland Protection, has basically built nothing within that zone. So we're here to seek your approval this evening, hopeful that these folks can expand small upon their house and create an in-law eventually for an aging parent. So with that, we'll respectfully.
What, if you don't mind, why don't you go and just briefly go through the plan? You don't need to go through all the details of the engineering, but.
This plan is, every Shoreland Protection has two plans to it, so this is just a DES plan, but it's a before and after. So it's pre-construction, the first sheet you see on your counter there, the first sheet of the set is pre-existing conditions plan. Pre-existing doesn't quite make sense, but it's a pre-development plan, existing conditions. And what I highlighted here in orange is the pavement as it exists and the house in improvements in pink as it exists, and of course, the river line. The river line didn't change, but what does change, and still the orange you can see here.
Excuse me for a minute. Is there a butter present in regards to this plan or people just, I just, I'm going to have him turn it if you really want to see it. I see the head trying to see it. Okay. All right. That's fine. Thank you. Continue.
And so basically, this, the green is what, the new pavement, a 14-foot section down to the river where a boat ramp does exist right now, but the property, it exists historically for a whole number of years. It was gravel at one point if they hit me. And as additional, what we're doing is done by the river, we're putting a 10-foot impervious pavement surface where the water completely, I would say 90% of it will drain into this pavement area before it hits the river. And that's the idea. Additional, we have plantings that are planted along the river to increase the vegetation. The yellow, as you see here, is an improvement that, to the house, improved deck and then approved garage and living space above. So those are the primary part of this application was to do this. The last thing that we worked with the Conservation Commission, they wanted to see a bio-retention area for any roof drains and other things that happened within the house to make sure there's not any increased drainage to the river. So we introduced through a gutter system and under-drain and a drainage system to drain to this small retention pond area. There's a detail to that. Actually, I think the detail actually shows up on sheet one. It's in this corner. It's a bio-retention cross-section where that has to be constructed as part of this in this small area to pick up the drainage as part of this new. So all in all, it's, all in all, it's a betterment to even what exists out there right now. There'll be less drainage down to the river as a result of this, even post-construction based on Conservation comments and DES comments to this point.
Thank you. Board questions, Tim.
So in your application, we have a colored photo of the boat ramp that goes down into the water.
Yes.
And the statement says where the pavement will be removed. Now, according to your plan, you're removing that pavement, but you're replacing it with porous pavement? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes. Down closest to the river, a 10-foot section.
10-foot is a block within it or the full width?
The full width.
Full width. And then will there be more pavement actually left beyond that that you're not removing or is it only the porous pavement to the edge of the water?
No, all the pavement to the river will be removed with the exception of course.
The Conservation Commission on the walk actually asked them to make the access to the river smaller and it would appear that you're doing that.
Yes.
They're actually digging it all up, making it less wide and replacing the pavement that abuts the river.
But you're still putting, replacing pavement with pavement, but you're replacing it with porous pavement?
Yes.
All right.
Porous pavement, FYI, I don't know if you're, I'm sure you're educated.
I am educated about porous pavement.
Yeah. It's very expensive too, but nonetheless.
It's also very maintenance heavy, it's heavy maintenance because it has to be cleaned twice a year in order to remain porous.
Yep.
It stops working if it gets sand in it.
We're aware of that.
Joanne, you had your hand up. I just wanted to remind the board that they need to acknowledge the Functions and Value Report and accept it. It was submitted by West Environmental dated September 2nd, 2020, it's in your packet.
Yeah, we hired Mark West, certified wetland scientist, to do a functional analysis report for the wetlands as part of our application. I forgot to mention that. Thank you, Joanne.
Other board members, do you have comments? Questions?
This is Kimberly.
Kimberly.
I would agree, sorry, I would agree with Tim that it's concerning to me that a homeowner would put in porous pavement, even though I love the idea, I've seen it in action. And as soon as it's not appropriately maintained, it becomes impervious pavement. So I don't love this proposal.
Okay. Conservation apparently did not express that concern. So am I understanding from Kimberly and Tim, who apparently have some understanding of it, that what we currently have is impervious pavement? And if you replace it with pervious pavement and don't maintain it, you end up with impervious pavement?
That is a correct assumption.
Okay. So the net impact, if this is not maintained, will be less pervious pavement because he's decreasing the width? Is that correct? If it's not maintained? Kimberly, am I getting that right?
Yes. I mean, you know, the homeowner or, you know, whoever's presenting this is, you know, it's tough because it's a greed product, but you know, it's just really frustrating that we've seen it fail so many times. And I, you know, I hope that they, I heard, you know, them acknowledge that they understand that needs to be maintained. I guess I would just point out that it truly does need to be maintained or it just becomes pavement.
Okay. I'm not going to get into what the maintenance is. I'm sort of curious, but I won't ask. All right. Any other questions or comments from people? So there was a Wetlands Functions and Value Reports submitted. I do remember looking at it, but now I can't find it. Why can't I find it now? Board members online, if you have it, can you acknowledge that you've got it and reviewed it? I don't know.
No, I didn't review it, so I'm not going to acknowledge anything.
I asked board members online, Tim. I saw you looking for it. Thank you.
I have reviewed it and I agree with the conclusion, we're not really going to affect the functions of the river based on this.
It's in the packet with the relief from the outer 50 on the front.
All right. Thank you, Kimberly.
But I trust these. I trust them.
All right. Are there any other questions from board members in regards to this before I open it up to public comment?
Barbara, this is Jim. I just want to pick up on Kimberly's concern and I have to look to her for an answer, but we typically, when we have erosion control or runoff structures that require maintenance, we have some kind of maintenance agreement on schedule. Is a porous driveway of that nature or is it just a matter of sweeping it and not making it be clogged or what? Is there something that we could require to make this satisfactory, to make it perform?
I don't know. Tim.
Porous pavement is affected by sand and grit. That's why it doesn't work on roads as well as everyone would like you to think it does. But in this application, in a private driveway, I think the amount of sand and grit that will be generated from the personal vehicles is probably going to be minimal. And it would be up to the applicant to make sure that when they wash the driveway off, they don't wash the sand and grit down into the porous pavement, basically. So it can be maintained, Jim. The ideal way to maintain porous pavement is to use a sweeper and vacuum it and remove the grit in an upwards fashion. But if the applicant is going to keep his driveway clean and hose it out periodically, I'm sure it will continue to function, Jim.
Can I add a comment?
Jim, I'm going to recognize the applicant.
My landscaper.
Name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Scott Buckland. My landscaper, who is there in a Property Weekly, has had conversations with me about maintaining this and she has no problem maintaining this once a month, once a week, whatever we need to. It's a pretty small area. It's only 10 by 14 once the adjustments are made. And she does several properties with porous pavement, so she knows how, she knows exactly how it works.
Okay.
I do want to point out just for that there is existing pavement there now that's, we'll say grandfathered, whatever it is, right? There is pavement there now on private property that what we're putting on the table is something that's better and it's going to be better functional. We're making the pavement smaller and then we're putting porous down by there. He's, and we'll add a note to the plan that clearly that the, that this should be maintained and I'll find the exact wording and the method of it for the reasons and the homeowner will be aware and these plans will be the record for that. That's the best I can ascertain.
Thank you. Any other board members?
This is Kimberly again. I would also comment that it is, it is an improvement that they are reducing the existing impervious area. So even with that included in to the calculation, it's still, it's still an improvement of the site.
All right. Any?
Barbara?
Peter.
Barbara, please. So if I understand this right, the Conservation Commission's looked at this and approved it and the state also, DES has looked at it and approved it? Is that the accurate?
It's accurate, yes.
Yes. The answer is yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing in regards to an application in regards to the wetland surface water conservation, outer 50 feet. This is relief in regards to a construction project for a property located at 115 Danus Park Road. It is zoned residential 2 and water surface water conservation district overlay. Is there anybody present in the room as a member of the public who would like to speak to this application? I'm not seeing anybody. I understand that we have Mrs. Hobbs online. That would be number 3313. Is that unmuted, Joanne?
Yes.
Ms. Hobbs, you are welcome, recognized to speak.
My name is Janice Hobbs and I live at 123 Danus Park Road. Just so you know what's in play, I have a long history with Mr. Buckland. Two granted restraining orders against him due to retaliation. My objections include the expansion of the land. On Mr. Buckland's Meridian map that I have provided, it would be the smaller map there that was done on April 8th, 2010. It was done for Mr. Buckland on another project. I have checked with, gone back in history, checked Adrian Roy, who sold him, gave him a deed in 1994. The property he is talking about is 19,000 square feet. Suddenly, the property is 26,800 square feet on his map. As I have said in my letter, there have been many years of adding on to this property. If you subtract the square footage, you get 7,806 square feet that the property was extended and it was extended into the river. If you have that copy of that map, you will see, looking at the, to get an idea of it, looking at the two center lines, what is on the plan in the middle? There's 150 feet on the plan that increased to 166 feet scaled. On the other, I'm talking about the two central lines on this map. There's 145 feet on the plan and has extended to 157 feet. Then if you go on to the line that abuts with Mr. Buckland's 111 Danus Park Road, that was 100 feet on the plan and I checked all these deeds. The original deeds from Mr. Danus were right on. This one, abutting, Mr. Buckland's rental house at 111 Danus Park Road, is now 118 feet. And if you take what he bought and what it has extended to, and this has extended into the river, it works out to be land added was 29.12% of the lot. Mr. Buckland is zoned a butter at his rental house at 111 Danus Park Road that he uses as 117 Danus Park Road. He has put it down on his plan as 117 Danus Park Road. He also has, his bail box also says 117 Danus Park Road. This is because in the Yellow Pages, he, I have the paper here that I got yesterday. He was still advertising his Granite State Dock and Marine on November 13th, 2020. That was in the Yellow Pages. Then he's still advertising Granite State Dock and Marine, 117 Danus Park Road. And that was on MapQuest, complete with the map down to his area. And then you have in your packet a Manchester Boat Services from Goshough Town Moose Landing Marina. He also advertises Moose Landing Marina at 117 Danus Park Road. And that's all in that area. The other, find my paper here. Sorry, I'm missing the paper. That's the expansion of the land. Then we get into the expansion of the building.
Mrs. Hobbs? This is Barbara, this is Barbara Griffin speaking. I appreciate the history of this property and the butter issue, but the issue before the planning board tonight is what he is proposing to do in the wetland surface water conservation district by the river. Not unfortunately, you know, and I understand that this is very hard for you and this has been a long history, but that's not really before us tonight. So in regards to what's going on by the river, are you saying that he's using more area than he has legally?
Yes, I am. He has expanded that 50% of that 50-foot buffer. And I am saying that 29.12% of that has been added by Mr. Buckland himself. It was. It was constructed by Mr. Buckland himself by encroaching into the protected river. The DES has all the specifics, concrete blocks, backfilling, multiple docks added over the years, the lengthy retaining wall.
Ms. Hobbs, here's my issue. Even if I take everything that you've said as true, I have an application before me that has a permit from DES and approval from my Conservation Commission. Did you go to the Conservation Commission with your concerns?
I did write a letter, a same letter that you have.
Okay.
In your file.
All right.
And the Conservation Commission took a walk, a site walk. Before they took that white saw, that walk, Mr. Buckland had his two employees living at 111 Danus Park Road come over and empty out his base of tools. They had a box truck in there. They had three pickup trucks. His friend Philip Lindsay was there. The two tenants were from Massachusetts. They moved all pickup trucks of tools out of there, and he is still running a business there.
Okay.
The 117 Danus Park Road is what he uses for advertising for his Moose Club Landing Marina.
I did see that in your information. All right. So your so your issues are he's using the site for business, and he has expanded the land by the river?
Yes, and he has also expanded the buildings without permit. He expanded the land into the river without permit after the fact, when he's caught, and then he puts things in. His rooms in the house.
All right. That, Ms. Hobbs, that the rooms in the house are absolutely nothing as the planning board that we have any jurisdiction over. There are various avenues for zoning code enforcement that can be followed in regards to issues in regards to property use, and a business use of this property would not be permitted in the zone, nor is it permitted for the lot by any approval that I'm aware of. Have you ever spoken to the zoning code enforcement officer?
Yes, I have, and they they denied his request to run these businesses in 2009.
All right.
It was denied.
But you.
He continues running them.
Okay. So so back. Okay, go ahead.
I have the topography and the drainage. In the packet, I have submitted pictures. And on page two and three of the pictures, it shows the amount of fill he had as added to raise this land up. On page two of the pictures shows the line along my property, was taken May 12, 1997. The picture below it is how he built up the front of the property, and when he put in then he put in a paved driveway that was paved right into the river, and the asphalt driveway actually the end of it crashed into the river. On the third page of the pictures, it shows the Buckland frontage. The driveway was left to that. Under this pile was his septic tank. Now, on the assessment sheet 2003, he has a two bedroom, one bath. He has a septic for a two bedroom, one bath. Then we have which shows the flood and the Mother's Day flood. And on his plan, it says a little square over by my boundary that says C-O-N-C. That is his 1,000 gallon septic tank that came loose during the Mother's Day flood and floated down the river.
Okay.
Well, it didn't get down the river. My chain link fence actually actually held it in. And that's on the pictures. But the topography with the photos, Mr. Buckland uses my property for a drainage. Then we have Mr. Buckland's preexisting plan.
Ms. Hobbs, Ms. Hobbs, I am really, I am very concerned that you've had a long history of issues with this lot, and it doesn't sound like perhaps they have been addressed by the town.
They have not.
And and I am very cognizant of that issue, and it is something that I'm hoping the town is addressing better. But for our purposes tonight, the public hearing is on the plan as presented in regards to the proposal to put an addition on the building and make changes to the driveway and the boat ramp. So I understand the his. Okay. So if you could just address those things, please, in regards to the plan?
Okay. We have the on the plan, the plans of reference.
No, I'm, Ms. Hobbs, I'm more interested in the plans that we're looking at tonight for what we're being asked to approve.
The plan you're looking at tonight is Mr. Buckland's preexisting conditions.
Okay.
And on the top are the plans of reference. Now, the supporting info on this is incorrect. His surveyor used number two, the boundary plan prepared for Vicki Doane in 2008. In 2014, there is a new plan because we came to a boundary agreement. His wife is Vicki Doane, and we came to an agreement on, and now it's a recorded boundary agreement on the Doane plan. We owned a property across the street, and he's using the Doane measurements that are not accurate.
So was the 2014 plan that is not referenced a plan in regards to the to 117?
117 Danus Park is not Mr. Buckland's legal address. His legal address is 115 Danus Park Road.
All right. I'm sorry. As soon as I said the number, I knew I was in trouble. So is the 2014 recorded plan, does that have different boundaries than the 2000 and boundary map done in 2008?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right.
Yes, it does. It was done because Mr. Buckland thought.
I don't, Ms. Ms. Hobbs, I don't really need to know why it was done. What you're telling me is that the plan that was done does not include a 2014 agreement that was recorded after the plans that he has referenced here?
That is correct.
Okay. So so. All right. So thank you for that clarification that there are some boundaries perhaps that we're not aware of. And you're saying that the shoreline has been expanded impermissibly, and that would be in the inner 50, which is not actually technically before the board tonight, but I just want to make sure I understood your points. And as to the buildings, you're saying some of the building that was done in the outer 50 was done without permit? And what he did was he sort of tried to clean things up for our site walk, but that he's running a business there?
Yes, he is.
Okay. All right. So thank you for those those comments as to this plan. I understand that you have many year long history with this and many issues, but as far as our plan is, there is an issue in regards to the plans used. I'm not saying that these are things we can address, but relevant to the plan as we're looking at is the reference to recorded plans, the fact that there's been some expansion of land, and the buildings on it. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Also, we have the proposed plan, which is affected by the preexisting when it's brought over.
Right. And that's. Okay.
Also, on notes, on the notes, there were multiple discrepancy.
Okay.
He wants to put rooms over this garage, but now it's rooms. It's unlimited number of rooms. And number eight and 14 disagree with each other on the pervious. Number eight says, there is no use of pervious technology proposed for this project. Then you get down to number 14. The current driveway shall be converted back to pervious. Also, we've got we've got on here, too, that he has the 26,806 square feet, which is where I got the 29.12 expansion into the river.
Okay.
It's not on the other, it's into the river. No limit on the rooms, the. Can't read my writing on one thing here. And it's the Moose Club Marina, which he has 111 Danus Park Road that has nothing to do with this. He has listed as 117 Danus Park Road. 117 Danus Park Road is my garage lot because the post office sent us the things. I was been down in Danus Park since 1953, and they sent around the mail things telling us what our addresses was were. And Mr. Buckland's address was 115 Danus Park Road. My garage lot, which I never consolidated, is 117. The house next door is 119. Then there's 121.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. I understand the post office numbering. Can you clarify for me? I've got that note on the on the post construction conditions plan that eight note eight and 14 contradict that the numbering of the lots as referenced for not lot lines, but the street numbers are inaccurate. Can you again tell me where the square footage of the lot is on this sheet? I'm just not finding it, the 20,000.
Oh, on the, let's see, it's on the.
Right in the middle.
Preexisting, number six. That's on the preexisting, number six.
Oh, I got it. It's over here. It's in the notes, too.
Also on the note.
It's in the note six.
It's also on the proposed.
Okay.
26,606 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's on both of them, it's number six. Are you ready for my husband? He has a little to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
He won't be long.
All right.
Well, thank you for hitting me out.
All right. Mr. Hobbs, are you there?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Hobbs. This is Barbara Griffin. We can hear you. Do you have some comments you'd like to make on this application that would be in addition or different from what your wife just said?
Very different. Well, I don't know if it's how different it is, but it's very short, and I'm sure it's not going to bend anybody's ear too badly. Do you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. My concerns are the commercialization of a residential neighborhood, and there's also safety factors. Danus Park has become a very busy park in the past few years. There's lots of new families and children on bikes. Mr. Buckland, in persisting to run his business, which he says the his docking marine business and his Moose Club Landing business, he's a boat dealer, and he brings his work home with him. He has multiple people during the week and weekends test driving boats. There's a lot of new boats. There's an endless stream of boats, trailers. He has a collection of classic cars, and these boats, the cars are a collection. I don't know if he's buying and selling them or what he's doing, but the docking is what bothers me. He's got many people docking and undocking boats there, and I believe it's for his business and and for winterized winterization and covering of the boats. Let me see. Mr. Buckland and his wife own two other abutting properties, 111 Danus Park and 118 Danus Park. Their legal address is 115 Danus Park. The 117 that he advertises as Moose Landing Marina, we my wife and I own 117. So if you guys give him a permit for 117, that means we can build there, I guess, for a two story garage, all kinds of rooms on there. Anyway, enough for humor. Mr. Buckland has three properties, not one, that he uses utilizes garage space in all three. He has full garage space underneath his house, which could accommodate at least three to four cars. He has a garage across the street from his property, which he has at least four cars stored at all times. He has a house to the left of his property that he could store more cars. Any expansion with a two story garage, to me, with rooms up above it, would only expand commercial or more living space without proper septic, and it would increase the traffic in Danus Park, getting to the safety issues. The safety issues I have, like I said, there's many children, there's many new parties down here, and Danus Park, the road is not even 20 feet wide in many places. If you can send your road agent down here to measure it, the road is not even 20 feet wide, and you get boats and trailers and trucks coming in and out. And any expansion or of his property is just going to expand his commercial activities, whether he has permit or not. That's what he's doing down here. His house and land are overbuilt and expanded, as I see it, with most of it with no permits or after the fact permits. Any expansion, again, with two stories with rooms up above can only mean expansion of commercial or living space without proper. My hope would be that the board would deny this project or at least take no action on it until the state would approve it. I think I've said enough. I hope I was clear for you. Thank you.
You were clear, Mr. Hobbs. Thank you very much. Joanne, are you showing anybody else online who'd want to speak to this application? Paul George, did he want to speak?
I don't know what he would add.
Paul George, did you want to say anything?
No, we're fine.
Okay.
I would like to say a couple things, though.
As would I.
All right. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Board members, do you have any comments at this time or further questions based on public comment? Tim?
I have a question for the applicant and the representative. The boat ramp that we saw in the photographs, was that was that a preexisting condition when the property was purchased, or was that installed by the homeowner?
It was already there. My father in law owned that.
You want to mute the Hobbs?
Joanne, could you please mute the?
Tim, I just asked it.
Charlie.
Yeah, just relax.
So you're stating that the boat ramp was a was preexisting, and it's a grandfathered boat ramp?
It's been there since the 60s.
Okay. Because the the comments from the public were that you installed that paved ramp into the river?
No, I repaved it. It was concrete. When I paved the original driveway, I went over that as well. It was pretty busted up and falling apart.
That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Any other board members have comments?
Yeah, I got a comment, Barbara. I got a couple. First of all, the abutter's complaining that he has collects classic cars and has them stored in the garage, which I don't believe that's an issue for us. That's not illegal to have classic cars. Number two, I travel that river all the time, and I drive by Mr. Buckland's house on my boat, and I don't see any commercial activity going on there at all. So I'm not really sure what they're talking about. And I've spent hours and hours driving up and down that river for the last four years.
Maybe they're complaining about you.
Yeah, it could be. You know, it could be, you know, maybe I shouldn't be driving up and down the river. I mean, I do pay my I do pay my state taxes and stuff to be able to do that, but so I don't understand. And my other question would have been for the abutter. Will they be able to see this addition from their property?
Okay. Well, I'm all right.
I don't believe so far, but they're on the opposite side of the addition. If I if I look at the plans right, so they won't even be affected by this.
I I.
And he's reducing the amount.
Go ahead.
Reducing the amount of asphalt going into the river, so how would he be expanding his business if he's reducing the amount of boat ramps? his business if it's reducing the amount of boat ramps?
Okay.
I'm done.
You don't ever happen to dock there with your boat, do you, Peter?
I have stopped by for a cocktail once.
Okay, just checking. Any other?
And there's absolutely, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, because many people have stopped at different places on the, I can tell you five or six places I've stopped and, you know, to talk with people on the river. It's not illegal.
Does any other board member have any comments? I think it's, we need to keep meetings on Thursday night, is my conclusion. At this point in the meeting, I'm not really looking forward to the next couple of applications. Are there any other board members that have questions or comments for this application at this point?
Jim, I, Jim, if, this is Barbara. I, I have a couple of questions. I don't quite know what to do with the plan when I'm being told that there's a subsequent plan that hasn't been referenced. And I don't quite know what to do with the plan.
Can I talk to that?
All right, the applicant is going to address that. So let me just tell you what my questions are. That, that, there are plans apparently on record that are not referenced, which I know down the road gets us into trouble when we look back at stuff. Um, and I note that the application does say one-fifteen for the relief, but I am looking at one-seventeen and one-eighteen on your plan, and a little confused as to the mailbox. I guess that's just a reference to a mailbox? I'm not really sure. And the area, and the area reference in regards to the size of the lot as compared to what it was originally?
Sure. I'd be glad to try to answer.
Okay.
So, I'm a licensed land surveyor, been practicing for, I don't know, twenty-eight years, maybe, in the state of New Hampshire. I'm on the board of land surveyors for the state. I have a good reputation. I know what I'm doing, bottom line. And I'm not trying to say I don't make mistakes, because I, everybody does. Um, the area?
No, that, that really didn't address my question. Is there a twenty-fourteen plan that was recorded that's not referenced on the plans of reference?
Not that I found on record, no.
Not that you didn't find anything on record?
And, and it's across the street, and it is not germane to this.
So there is a plan, but it doesn't relate to this lot?
There might be. I don't know.
Okay.
But it, it does not relate to the boundaries of this lot.
Okay. I'm just used to seeing when there are plans of reference, everything to do with the lot gets listed.
And, and as we do. We always list our plans of reference, as we did here. And I'd be glad to look into that two thousand fourteen.
Okay, I just.
But it's not going to, it's not going to affect the boundaries of this lot. That's what I can tell you.
So there is a twenty-fourteen plan that you're aware of?
Maybe I, I didn't find anything on record, is what I can tell you.
There is another plan that's referenced on here, and it talks, it mentions the Hobbs land, which is, which that plan is after the, um, that one is dated two thousand thirteen. It's a boundary survey plan for Frank and Janice Hobbs.
No, no, I see the three references, but what I was told was there was a twenty-fourteen. I think she, she referenced it in regards to the second one, but I saw that it was later than all three of them. Okay.
Sure. It's apparently across the street, and I know it does not change our boundaries. So that's what I can tell you. It won't change our boundaries. The, the boundaries of this lot, the other thing I'd want to say is the area. Um, the area is what the area is. I, whether, where they're getting their records of the square footages and whatnot, a lot of times that can come from GIS, tax map information, old stuff. I would tell you, Ken Clinton from Meridian in two thousand ten, his plan, if you read through his plan, he clearly notes, note number three, that the lot information is based on a reference plan, and Goffstown GIS, boundary lines are approximate.
Okay.
Um, he does not, his information, the shape of his lot, as he shows on his stamp plan, is the same shape as mine.
Right.
So I, 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 um, I will tell you that I, I'm not disagreeing with his plan to our plan, because I think that ten years later, they're comparable. It's just our plan has more detail and more survey information available to it. Then thirdly, she was astute in pointing out note number eight should be revised now, only because with the Conservation Commission asking us to add the porous pavement, um, that is where that note was generated initially for the DES, and it's a mistake on our part for the last revision not to basically delete that note or strike that note or add to that, um, re-reference that note, because it references impervious pavement, basically, that technology. Note number fourteen is completely different. That's basically saying, we're taking away some pavement and we're going to plant and seed it. So that's not germane to, um, that note number six in any way, shape, or form, or note number eight, excuse me.
Note number eight.
Yeah, excuse me about that. So then, regarding business, um, Scott, Buckland can, as the owner, can talk to that element, but I will tell you from, I know him from the Derry, New Hampshire area. I haven't bought any boats there or anything, but actually, that, yeah, yeah. But I've done survey of his lot over there, know various, that's how I know Scott. But his business is in Derry. That's where his business is, Granite State Dock and Marine. So, and he, he could speak to that. And he, he's told me that there's no business here, and that's not what he's doing. So, but I can let him state what he needs to, as far as that goes.
Well, let's try to keep it to the, the plan and what's before us.
Perfect.
Um, board members, any other questions? I'm not hearing anything. All right. Um, I, I am just going to ask Mr. Buckland to go on the record as to whether he's operating a business out of this location or not.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Do, do board members have any issues that need to be resolved in regards to this application? If the board is, um, inclined to approve this request, this, the staff has made certain recommendations for approval. Um, and I guess my question would be if somebody was, um, I'm going to leave it at that. Tim?
Um, in your opening statements, Mr. Pellican, you made a, a very brief comment that there may be an in-law apartment in this at some time in the future. That's another whole application, that we're not approving any in-law apartments tonight.
And, and it can maybe let?
No, I don't, I don't want to carry it farther. I just want to be aware that you stated it.
Yep.
And I want to put it on the record that it is not what you're asking for tonight, and we are not approving an in-law apartment tonight.
Yeah, good, good point. I appreciate that, and I apologize for the segue.
Because that's another whole ball of wax. Thank you.
That's actually a different board.
Mm-hmm.
I have two additional.
Joanne.
Conditions, just based on your conversation that I've added. Um, so number three would be porous pavement shall be maintained on a regular basis by the owner of the property. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that or not. And then the fourth would be to remove note number eight.
Where are you, Joanne? Where, where are you pointing, talking about the conditions?
On page six of the staff report.
Yep. So you're, you're stating we should add a note that?
Two, two additional conditions. Rorous pavement shall be maintained on a regular basis by the owner of the property. And then number four would be remove note number eight.
From the plan.
From the plan.
Do board members have any other?
What was number four, Joanne? I'm sorry.
Peter.
You were broken up.
Remove.
What was number four?
It's so hard to talk at this. Remove note number eight from the plan.
She's got a mask on. I can barely understand her in the room.
Um, normally, when you put a condition of approval, like number three, that the porous pavement needs to be maintained by the property owner, in the past, we've required some sort of annual report to either planning or to the Public Works Department, so that there is a written record that it is being done, and it is not just left up to the owners' goodwill and, and promise that they will do it. So there has to be some sort of a recording of that. So you need to add to that note that an annual report needs to be submitted to town engineer at DPW of the maintenance.
I, you know, Tim, I, I get that when it's roads and drainage and that kind of thing, but exactly how, Sarah, exactly what would DPW do with or expect from somebody on a, on a perv, pervious pavement driveway? Do you have any idea what DPW would want?
Um, let's say, if it was like a business, or if it was a condo complex, we would do a drainage maintenance agreement and expect them to, um, provide us with their operation and maintenance manual. So basically say, we will inspect it every so, like however often, and what exactly they plan to do to maintain it and clean it. And the drainage maintenance agreement would go along with that, so that if like the town, if it was failing, for example, if this was failing and there were complaints that the water was, there was more sediment in the water, that the town could go clean it and send them a belt. I, we don't typically do something like that for an individual resident.
Thank you. Tim?
So with that, with that analysis from Public Works, then we should strike the note number three and not have the note in there at all, then? Because there's no enforcement of, of action by the town. It's on the plan. The owner has stated they will take care of it. We're going to have to rely on the owner's, uh, word.
So why don't we change note number eight to pervious pavement to be maintained by property owner?
Yes. And I can expand on that to, to whatever that regular maintenance is of porous pavement. If I can, I can find it via DES, I'm sure, or if a member of the board would like to.
Just a reference to what it's supposed to be done.
What that is, so that the owner knows what the schedule should be, that should be maintained between months of the season, whatever it might be.
Okay.
Sometimes the maintenance schedule, particularly for something this small, because it would only be a couple notes, is added on the plan.
Right. So we're going to, we're going to.
He could add like.
We're going to put a note on the plan. I'm sure it's something like best management practices for some other things that they do. And I'm sure when it comes in, we can look at it and make sure it's something we can at least have a reference to, to have some understanding and some ability, if there's a complaint, to actually say, have conservation go down and take a look at it and go yea or nay it's being maintained. I mean, because that's really probably what the direction would be for the town to take a look at it. They'd probably send conservation down. All right. So we still have, so we have a change, so our delete note eight is now change note, note eight.
It's also delete note eight, delete the, the information in note eight. Whatever is there written down needs to be deleted.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this? I'm hearing rustling papers. I'm assuming that's a board member to, to, um, Gail has been appointed a voting member on this. Karen and David, you are also a voting member, as Phil is not present tonight either. So is there a motion? Tim?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the request for the relief of the outer fifty feet of the wetland surface water conservation district buffer to allow the owner to construct a seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight-foot square foot addition to the existing home with the attached garage and rooms and other notes, as described in the, uh, in the, uh, request.
In the application.
I'll second.
All right. It's been seconded by Peter.
And that the conditions of approval, I had number three, which would state that, wrote it down, that, uh, we're going to delete the content of note number eight on the plan and replace it with the statement that the owner is responsible to maintain the porous pavement, uh, so that operates satisfactorily.
I'm still good with that.
And I think you were going to add a note about maintaining that the owner is responsible to maintain the porous pavement.
I just said that. It's good, we're going to make that note number eight on the plan.
Oh, you're going to replace the note? Okay, I get it.
There was a lot of confusion within citizens that were deleting something and then adding something.
Okay. It's just a new note, number eight.
I knew. What's, what's old is new.
All right. Peter, you're good with that for the second?
Yes, I am.
All right. I'm going to call for the vote. Peter?
Yes.
Kimberly? James?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Too many votes. Isn't we only Phil missing? Oh, Karen's missing.
Thank you for your endurance and patience with us.
I just did, Tim. You didn't hear me.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you for coming back. We apologize that we weren't able to address it on Thursday last week. Our next item on our agenda is a completeness review, conditional use permit, waiver of new site plan in regards to map five, lot seventy-three. The property is located at two-fifteen Wallace Road. This is an item of new business. This is a request in regards to site plan review development regulations to allow for a group child daycare center on a property, property that formerly had a kindergarten, new morning school located on it. A group child daycare center is allowed by conditional use permit in the agricultural district per section three-eleven B table of principal uses of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The applicant is also requesting a waiver of the site plan requirements that would require a revised engineer site plan to be submitted. The applicants are Jason and Audrey Withy, and the property owners are Roger and Kathleen Schnebel. The property is located at two-fifteen Wallace Road. The property is zoned agricultural. Joanne, is this application complete?
Yes, it is.
Um, does it have any regional impact?
No, it does not.
Um, conditional use permit is being requested, and a waiver is being requested for the site plan development regulation checklist, site plan review. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that the only waiver being requested?
Yes, they're basically requesting a waiver from the full site plan review, as well as any other items that would be requested with the development regulations.
So the request for acceptance would be subject to that waiver for acceptance purposes only, correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
Thank you, James. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Peter. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right, Joanne, what's the background on this, please?
Oh, okay. So this property, um, years ago had been used for new morning school. I'm sure most of you are familiar with that. It was an active preschool and later became an after-school care center as well. Um, it's located on Wallace Road, and the property sold, and it was then converted to, I believe there's two units in there. There's also a large barn that's attached. And the property was used strictly for residential use. The new applicant, or the, or I should say the applicant, is proposing to convert the building back into a school slash daycare, and they would like to use the entire building as well as the barn for that type of use. Um, they do need a conditional use permit, uh, which allows the daycare in the agricultural zone. They're not making any changes, really, to speak of, to the site itself. Uh, they do show the parking areas have been switched around somewhat, very, you know, just basically on the right-hand side of the plan, and it's outlined in red. And they've moved the outdoor recreation space for the children towards the, uh, towards the back of the building, where prior it had been to the right, where they've shown the new parking. Um, they, we have met with TRC. We've met with all of the pertinent staff that needs to be involved, and fire department. and fire department. Basically, the codes have changed since this was used as a school, so they have to upgrade the buildings themselves, but the site is basically almost the same. So they're asking for a waiver of site plan. The site plan that they used as a reference is from nineteen eighty-six. The new morning school, that, that was when New Morning added an addition. Prior to that, it had already been a school. It was there for probably at least twenty-five years or so. So they're here to talk tonight about whether they could receive the approval for the conditional use permit as well as the waiver of a regular site plan, since they're not making changes basically to the site itself. They propose to have sixteen employees, both full and part-time, and they're looking to operate between six-thirty a.m. and six p.m.
So I think before we address this plan, which we sort of need to take a look at for an overview, we, we need to discuss the waiver of, of the full checklist, but why don't we hear from the applicant as to the site plan that we're looking at, as to what's proposed, so we can deal with the issue of the checklist, because that seems to be sort of critical before proceeding.
Well, thank you for, for having me tonight. Unfortunately, my wife was the other applicant, is unable to make it. We were here on, on Thursday, but in short notice, we, she could not make it this evening.
Thanks, so could you just state your name for the record?
Yes, sorry, my name is Jason Withy.
Thank you.
And my wife's name is Audrey.
Okay.
So in regards to the site plan, I think Joanne did a great job kind of giving you an overview. So we did base it off the original plan from, from nineteen eighty-six, with the addition to the original farm structure was added for the, the new morning school classrooms that were put, put in place. During that site plan, there was a large, approximately four thousand square foot paved parking area installed in the front, on the front side of the property, and the existing gravel area for a barn, as well as, there was two-car garage, or two separate garage bays over the right-hand side. Later, one of the garages was demolished and removed, and it was just used as parking. So what we had proposed for changes, which was already kind of in existence, was there was a median in the middle of the parking area that was never, never installed or built. So we're proposing placing the parking along the front edge near the wooded, wooded lot that divides the road and, and the driveway. This parking is meant for parent drop-off and pickup, as well as overflow parking for staff during midday, so peak, peak hours for staff are, are midday. Early mornings and late evenings, the, the staff ratios are, are smaller, as children get picked up usually around three o'clock. And then additionally, over here, there was already on the original site plan, a number of parking spots. What was the former playground, which is a combination of, of gravel, and it's actually mostly gravel now, a little bit of sand, and it's kind of started to overgrow a little bit with grass. We would be using that area as parking. We don't want to have children playing right along the street side here, so as Joanne mentioned, we're taking this fenced-in area, we aren't removing the fence, but we're installing a, a new fenced-in area in the rear of the building to remove that from, from both the road and the, the abutting properties to keep it further away, as you can see in this plot. So that, that is really the proposed plan. We had originally talked to the TRC about using the barn in our, our near-term plan in terms of construction changes inside of the building, understanding there's a separate permit process for that. We only intend to be using the main building at this time, so we would be using the, the first floor, the lower floor, and the second floor of, of the main building as, as our classrooms. It's for six weeks to, to six-year-olds, all the way up through to pre-K age group, so infants to pre-K. I think that summarizes the plan of the site.
And, and so why do you think a waiver of the site plan is, of this checklist is appropriate in doing everything associated with that?
Yep, so this was originally used as the new, new morning school. As, as Joanne mentioned, it had previous approval for that purpose. We have no intention of adding any impervious material to the property. We have no intention of changing any of the asphalt, and we have no intention of changing any of the exterior portions, with the exception of adding a fenced-in area to the rear of the property. So there is no modifications that we intend to do to any of the exterior of this property that was not already previously granted for school use, childcare, and kindergarten. So we're, we're requesting that, that we aren't modifying what was already previously approved as part of that process. And then I think that a couple of the big areas that were described in the letter that we had provided as well, we see no major changes to the road pattern. Wallace Road is already a fairly busy road, right down the road from the high school. We don't expect this traffic to have a noticeable impact on that. We don't expect this to have a noticeable impact to the neighborhood. We only operate Monday through Friday. This lot is a fourteen-acre lot, so there isn't, you know, any, any major disruption to, to any of the neighbors. There's only really two near neighbors on either side, and I believe they both formerly were living there prior to when it was a school. So it wasn't, it wouldn't be anything that would change or impact them as part of that process.
Questions from zoning members in, I mean, excuse me, planning board members in regards to the issue before us on the, the checklist and the site plan before we proceed further? Tim?
You stated that your proposed operating hours are six-thirty to six p.m. You haven't stated the days of the week you intend to be open.
Sorry, that's Monday through Friday.
And you stated you're gonna have approximately sixteen full-time, part-time employees? Do you know how many staff members were at the new morning school prior? I mean, how much more of an increase in use of the property is your proposal versus the prior proposal?
So I, I don't have official numbers for what they had for student or staff. I will say that state regulations have changed with time. Student ratios have gone up or gone down, and as well as the age group that we are looking to involve as a lower age group, which has a higher student to staff ratio. The original plan had parking for, this was a mixed use, so it was residential and a school. It had the owner's places, as well as, I think, five or six additional staff parking. So we are increasing the, the staff parking because of the student ratio restrictions in New Hampshire and part of the childcare regulations.
So part of a site plan approval or, or, a site plan process is to talk about the things like the septic system and that now. Are you going to have to do anything to have this make an adjustment or that, or is it, what's your statement on the septic system?
So we've had the septic system inspected. It is a, over a thousand-gallon septic tank. We plan to work with the building inspector to make sure that's compliant, there's any state regulations in regards to the childcare facility. Our research thus far actually shows a reduced water usage compared to what you would have based on EPA for, for residents this size. As it stated, I think, a six-bedroom, five-bath or something along those lines. So we consider that, based on the number of usage at our child age level, that it would actually be a reduction in water usage for this facility.
So that's, it's a thousand-gallon septic tank, you're saying?
Correct.
Well, that's basically a two- or three-bedroom system, which is based on four hundred and fifty gallons a day.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty gallons, and on a child, it's five, I think it's around five gallons per child.
So you, you are going to state for the record that your septic system would be adequate for the use you're proposing?
We understand that that would be something we would have to review with the building inspector if there are issues, but our understanding is yes, that it would be acceptable.
Thank you.
Barbara, this is Jim.
Thank you.
This is Tim Don.
Yes, he is.
Um, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. We have to define when what the applicant is asking for. Is he asking for a complete waiver of site plan review, or is he asking for a waiver of certain things on the checklist? And I'm not clear. But then we, we do occasionally have to look at our regulations. And if you look on page twenty-two, section four, site plan, it says, we have to, we review site plans for a change in use, and a change in use shall be any use that causes an increase in the intensity of present use. And that adjective has some significance. So this may have been a school at one, one time, but that's not its present use. And I'm, you know, I'm in favor of this activity, but you are changing the present use, and the applicant rattled off at a speed that I couldn't keep up with, a number of changes and that are going to be made on the ground that typically would be shown by a site plan. So I'm hard-pressed to see under our regulations that it's exempt from site plan review. That's different from waiving certain items on the checklist, and, and Tim was going through some of the considerations we may not be concerned about. And if you look for other models, you look, for example, at our zoning ordinance on abandonment of a non-conforming use, which doesn't strictly apply, because a guard, if you stop a use for twelve months, it's deemed abandoned. So my understanding, new, uh, new morning schools have been closed for some time, so it's not a continuation of an existing use or recently terminated use. It's, it's quite a while ago. So I, I don't see how, under our regulations, we can grant a full waiver. Instead, I think the focus would be on what items that don't we need to see on our checklist that may have been presented, and there's no meaning material change on, for the current proposed use.
Okay, I can't say that I disagree with Jim's analysis. Joanne?
So when staff looked at this, we felt that it really didn't warrant a site plan based on the fact that the only thing that was basically changing was the addition of a fence, which doesn't even require a building permit, and some additional parking on a gravel area, which they're not adding any pavement to that area whatsoever. The, the, the thing that's changing is the interior of the building, which this board has nothing to do with. The, the interior of the building is being handled by the appropriate departments, police, fire, building, and the, and the things like septic and that sort of thing. That all goes through the build, as well, the building department, as well as the state approval. If septic, if a larger septic is required, they would basically handle that at the building level. So we didn't see this basically as, I'm not, I'm not arguing with what Jim just said. Basically, it is definitely a change of use. However, there's nothing really changing as far as what the planning board would normally look at.
Barbara, may I respond briefly?
Yes, yes.
Um, we, we look at use and changes on the ground. An example of use would be, you know, material change in hours of operation. It doesn't require a change in the building structure, but it is a change in use that we would be concerned about. So I, I appreciate that the, the building may not be materially changed, but it is a change from a present use.
And, and that-
And that, that's solidly within our jurisdiction, and I, I, I just think we, we need to review that.
And, and Jim, that's why they're here for the conditional use permit, because that should be the first thing that you address, because in order for them to be able to do this type of business in the agricultural zone, they need the approval of the conditional use permit.
But, but I understand the conditional use permit is not a substitute for site plan review. They're usually done at the same time, because that's a zoning matter, and site plan review is a planning matter, both of which we have jurisdiction over, but they're not the same.
Other board members? All right, well, I think I understand Jim's point. I'd like to try and help this, you know, it's an application. I want to try and help the application along. Perhaps, as Jim points out, we should have the applicant address the conditional use piece of it. I do have, I believe, an abutter on the line for this application to hear the abutter comments on it, and then maybe at that point, we can give the applicant some direction, because if there's not an issue with the conditional use piece of it, and we can address the site plan checklist, because I know that there is an issue in regards to the fact, I can just think of one, that would be a traffic study that we don't have. Maybe we can go through a checklist, even though we don't have it, if the board thinks we need one, and the applicant can get some direction so it can be dealt with. Other board members in regards to proceeding? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna ask the applicant to address the conditional use permit, which I think was addressed in your letter.
Correct. And, and actually, I touched upon quite a few of them.
Yeah, I know you did. Just, just summarize and go through each of them.
It's hard to, to separate the two.
Right, as, as James pointed out, yes. So we know that the use is specifically authorized as a conditional use, this is agricultural. In regards to that, and in regards to your letter, you, on page two, you talk about it.
Correct.
All right, and if you just want to summarize the rest of them for us?
So, so let me just step back again to what was mentioned. So it was previously the new morning school. This would be, again, a, a use for a childcare group center, operating between the hours of six-thirty a.m. and six p.m., Monday through Friday. When we're at full capacity, we expect to have-
Okay, if you don't mind, I, the conditional use, we have a methodology that we have specific questions that need to be asked, so let me ask you the questions.
Okay, sure.
If completed as proposed, will this development in its proposed location comply with all the requirements of the applicable zoning sections with the specific conditions or standards established for the particular use?
Correct.
All right. And will this use be compatible with the neighborhood or adjoining or abutting uses in the area in which it is to be located?
Yep.
And will the use have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian safety?
No.
Will the use have a substantial adverse impact on the appearance and visual quality of the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
And will the use be serviced adequately by public utilities and by community facilities?
Yes.
All right, and, and the basis primarily for your answering yes of all that is that the structures on the site are not changing-
Correct.
... and the use is consistent with one that's occurred in the very same neighborhood as it stands?
Correct.
Okay. Does, does the board have any questions or comments on the conditional use piece of this? Does the board have any other questions or comments? Because I think what I'm gonna do is open it up for public comment at this point, if not. All right, this application is an item of new business that has been accepted with a waiver request for acceptance purposes only in regards to map five, lot seventy-three. This is a proposal for a child daycare center on property on Wallace Road, two fifteen Wallace Road. And at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I believe I have Linda Gagnon on the line, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Linda Gagnon, and my husband and I live at twenty-four Richwood Drive, which is off Wallace Road. And I do have a, a slight problem with a, a daycare on Wallace Road, anything dealing with children. Wallace Road is a very busy road, and I'm, I listen to all the comments and everything. There are gonna be people driving in and out, not only at six in the morning and six at night. A child could be sick, it could be during the day, picking up their children and everything. I'm concerned about the traffic study. There's gonna be people in and out. I know how fast some of the cars drive on that road, because I drive it daily. And that is a big concern, and I have a big concern, especially because it is children. I'm a former teacher. I know about children, and I have a concern about this in that area.
Thank you.
That is my comment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for hanging in there and making the comment. Is there anybody else with you? Thank you. Joanne, do we have anybody else online to make a comment on this application?
No, we just have the board members.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to end the public hearing, subject to continuation or ending, depending on what the board decides to do tonight. Joanne, do you have the checklist with you? Okay, so if you could bring that up to me.
This is for the next application.
Oh, okay. All right. So board members, there is an application checklist, which is supposed to be completed. And I think frankly, Joanne, for purposes of this, in the future, the form just needs to be done.
Is it in our packet?
Yeah, is that different than?
The next application has a checklist.
So board members, if you turn to page, what page is it, Tim?
If it's the application for development review, it's the third page, is the application checklist.
It should say it on the page you're holding, Barbara.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. Okay. So you each have a checklist actually in front of you and, oh. It is in his package that he sent in.
I believe it should be here.
Yeah, the application for development review.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
It's the third page.
This isn't the next application.
Oh, okay.
So they've actually submitted it, so in a way, they're not, they're not really asking for a waiver of the checklist, Joanne. They've given us the checklist. They're asking for a waiver of the requirements of the checklist.
That's right.
All right. So I apologize for people that I didn't catch that because I did speak with staff before this, albeit last week. And I think my brain has gone numb a little bit since last Thursday night. So there actually is a checklist application done. And this is not a conceptual, so it's not applicable. So, Joanne, you want to go through the final subdivision and site plan items?
Sure. So they're asking for a waiver from the checklist item section 2B5, which is a traffic study. Do you want to stop at each one or just have me read them?
Read them.
The second one is section four, site plan specifications for plans and documents. Number three is section five, assurances for completion and maintenance of improvements. And section, I'm sorry, number four, section six, design standards and requirements for improvements. And then the answers to that are, the site was formally approved for a daycare kindergarten school. Number two, no major changes to the exterior site are being requested, including building structures and parking. Number three, the site has ample off-road parking for staff and parent drop-offs with both paved, dual-access horseshoe parking and gravel parking. And number four, references the attached letter that you've been looking at.
All right. So is the board all on board with the fact that we have waivers? The waiver is not just a blanket one, that we have specific waiver requests? All right. I'm not hearing anything. So the first waiver request is for a traffic study. And the reason is the site has previously operated as doing one and I believe that there was no traffic study done for that one.
Barbara, this is Jim for a minute. So are they asking essentially for an amendment to a previously approved plan to let them operate for this site? So they're not waiving site plan review. They're asking for a waiver of certain items in that review. So we would, when we get through this, if I understand now what is being proposed, we would grant site plan approval, but not require that all these items be presented to us before we-
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. So that's different than my earlier understanding where they were trying to waive site plan approval because of the breadth of the way the waiver request was described in the agenda.
Right. And I apologize for not picking that apart. And the applicant was very kind to not say, "We have an application for waiver in the package." Because I looked at it and read the letter, but I got carried away with the title. So we're talking about a site plan, essentially a site plan approval of this using as a base the 1986 site plan, which is approved. It's not, so I don't understand this, that this is an amendment of a site plan. Is this a new site plan and he's just using this older site plan?
Well, that's what I thought, but what Jim just said makes more sense. He's basically amending the previous site plan.
Or previously approved site plan approval. Where approval is more than just a plan. There's other conditions, so we can-
Correct.
All right. Can we go through the checklist requirements? Let's talk about a traffic study. I don't think there's ever been one done for this. I don't know that we have any information in regards to the number of students there before as compared to proposed. Is that correct, Joanne?
That's correct. We don't have that information because it wasn't contained in the file. So I've added a recommendation to add a condition number five to page 10, which states, "The board reserves the right to request an amended site plan and/or traffic study should traffic become an issue as determined by town staff."
You're adding that as number five, Joanne?
Correct.
Traffic study is the, that's what you're saying, and if a problem arises?
Yes. Should traffic become an issue? And I drive by there every day, too. So I'll keep an eye on it.
I don't know if traffic will become an issue because I work from home. But I do know that living down on Crestwood Lane, which is less than a mile from there, that Wallace Road traffic has increased over the years. And I don't know if it's increased since, you know, with the numbers from what New Morning had versus what they'll have. But just the current traffic now has increased from what it's been. And if we haven't had a traffic study, I'm wondering if one shouldn't be done in any way.
Okay. Other board members on a traffic study?
Barbara, this is Jim. The usual traffic study addresses road capacity. And as I understand, and we know how it always comes out, it's always going to say it's not a significant increase. We've heard that many times. The police, we usually look to for traffic safety. You know, occasionally, the traffic studies talk about that, about improvements to be made. But if the issue is volume of traffic and cars going too fast, isn't that more of a police enforcement, a police issue than a traffic study issue? I ask that as a question. I just don't recall that the usual traffic study really looks at-
The traffic-
The safety aspect.
Traffic studies are usually more helpful if you're looking at intersections and whether something needs a stop sign or a traffic light or some sort of off-site improvement. In this case, since it's a major road going through town, you'll, you know, you'll get the traffic counts and the counts going in and out of the site. But I'm not sure if it will help you with anything. You're certainly not going to add any, any sort of, you know, traffic improvement.
Well, I mean, the two issues are, if indeed, as Gail says, Wallace Road traffic is heavy or gotten heavier, the amount of traffic that's going to be generated as an impact on Wallace Road traffic is going to be minimal just by virtue of the numbers of Wallace Road. So the question becomes, I think Jim's, is, isn't it a police matter of enforcement? I think the only thing that it might end up coming back to us is if, for some reason, there was an issue in regards to drop-off such that they were stacking in Wallace Road, then they would have to come back and do something with the entrance to prevent the stacking. Tim?
The prior use, I can remember when it was the New Morning School, when they had their end-of-year graduations, that there were problems with people parking on Wallace Road and that road became very dangerous. But this is not a school. This is a daycare, so it's a different use.
Well, I think it's actually both.
So, yeah, it's a preschool and pre-kindergarten as part of that.
And they have graduation.
But the one difference between us and the New Morning School, who has a fairly strict starting, my understanding was a fairly strict starting time and ending time, was there was a group of people picking up and dropping off at the same time. Whereas with our childcare facility, it is open for a number of hours. We expect a slow, slow drop-off around the early hours, kind of peaking at probably eight in the morning, 7:30, eight, and then slowing down again towards nine. But it's not a instantaneous, eight o'clock is our start time for-
We're instantaneous pickup.
We're instantaneous pickup, correct.
Then a follow-up, then, we may want to be cognizant of the fact or make some requirement that parking on the street would not be allowed for events where graduations and such will be held because it is a dangerous road. It's a fast spot. It's a blind area. Come down in the hollow there and you come up, the New Morning's on the right, so.
Yeah, but no parking thing is going to be something that needs to go to highway safety. For a recommendation, they do a whole study.
Well, then I would say they'd have to have a mitigation plan for parking on the street then, rather than have people parking on the road. They have to tell us what they're going to do with parking during those events.
So we did actually talk about that during our TRC. And one of the proposed or suggested plans for any big events like that was to request parking either at the school or further down the road on Wallace Road, where there's actually a large parking spaces available and do transportation between those facilities and our facility if the necessity ends up occurring for large gatherings like that.
Okay, you're talking about-
But we understand there is, there's absolutely no parking availability on that road. I don't, I don't see how there could be. There's not a big enough shoulder to have parking on the road.
Gail?
They do have two cul-de-sacs down in my neighborhood, one on Crestwood, one on Ridgewood. And the one on Ridgewood actually butts their back property. So there could be some parking there if they're willing to do that walk.
Yeah. All right. Other comments or questions on traffic and the traffic study? All right. I'm going to run through these. Site plan specs for plans and documents, section four, waiver has been requested. The applicant's position is that the plan that they've used with the amendment is adequate in regards to the fact that there's no building changes proposed. There's no paving proposed change. There's parking change and a play space move.
And just to clarify, the parking change is just a use change of the space that's already there. It's just an identification of that's how our parking plan would be laid out. It's not an actual change of the property layout to support that.
Okay. Questions from board members?
This is Jim. I guess I'm a little confused, which is not surprising. Though I'm looking at the plan, it says, "Off to the right by the former playground, existing gravel drive and sand playground, staff parking." So is that already a parking area? It's been a few years since my kids went to New Morning School, so I don't remember. At least two or three years, anyway. So is that a, is that a material change from what's there? It looks like it's encroaching in the former playground. The second question is, do we care? You know, we've allowed, yeah, minor changes in site plans on the basis of sketches like this. I just want to be able to define what we're talking about, so.
So if I can answer that question, twofold on that. So the former playground, based on satellite imagery, appeared to be a sand play space. But that parking area, the majority of those spaces are part of a gravel driveway that exists. As you can see, there's actually an existing garage structure still there today. Prior, when it was New Morning School, there was an adjacent garage structure next to it. And so what we're looking to do is keep using the same gravel space if, for any reason, we do need additional gravel. We don't plan to bring in any more gravel. We actually plan to reduce the existing horse arena area and use that material as part of it if need be and turn that back to green space. But at this time, we see no reason to have to make any changes based on what we've seen for site walks with that property in that location.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that point? Section, section four. All right. Moving on to section five. Completion, assurances for completion and maintenance of improvements. There essentially are none. Any board comments? Section six, design standards and requirements for improvements. Essentially, there are none. So what we come down to is a waivers requested along with a condition, multiple waivers requested and a conditional use permit to allow use. Staff is recommending, DPW, take a look at this. Sarah, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Joanne has on here that DPW should decide if an amended driveway permit is required. Have you seen this plan?
I have. And I spoke with Eric. We decided if they're not changing anything, then it shouldn't require a driveway permit. But if they decide to change the configuration at all or if they choose to upgrade it and pave it, that's when it would require a modification. But the addition of this, of like, making sure the enter and exit signs, that shouldn't require a driveway permit.
Okay. And there's also a recommendation for looming and seating the horse arena to reduce impervious area? I'm not sure I understand that.
We talked about it at the TRC meeting, that if they weren't going to use that, I thought it would be a good idea in order to reduce the impervious area on the site because the horse arena is like a gravel surface. They could loam and seed it so it would just be grass, which wouldn't create as much runoff.
Okay. I have to tell you, I'm not as inclined to go along with that one. I don't know that any calculations have been done and this is a 14-acre site. That slope's generally that way anyways, so it's all going, it's all going downhill behind this site, whether it's sheeting off.
It wasn't on, like, I wouldn't call that a make it or break it recommendation.
Okay. I mean, I think they might decide to do it, depending on what's going on, but I don't-
Shouldn't be a requirement.
Yeah.
We should remove that.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Staff has also commented that the traffic flow signage should be up as currently, as currently on the plan. I don't think there's any traffic signage up there now, is there?
So there was in the original plan. We removed that traffic signage on our plan. So if you look at the original plan from '86, you'll see they did have an enter and an exit sign in these two areas. We do not intend to install those, nor did they. In the original plan, you saw there's a median and an island in the middle of the parking space. That doesn't actually exist and we don't plan to install that either.
Well, but they did have an enter and exit sign there.
They may have. They don't exist anymore.
Why wouldn't we have it?
There's no reason we don't need to. They're wide enough to enter on both sides, the openings of the drive space. But we can, we can install an enter and an exit sign as part of that process.
Tim?
Yeah, if you're going to have a parent drop-off area, I think you need to have some, give them some direction. So I think you should definitely consider having an entrance and an exit to that site and posting signs to the effect.
And we also understand that any signage for the actual business would be a separate application as part of this process.
Correct. Other board member comments on the recommendation in regards to traffic flow signage on the original site plan to be installed? And I think that did just deal with the flow of that parking area to the, as you look at it, the left. I don't think there was ever any signage to the right because that was sort of a private entrance.
Yeah, the private drive.
Okay.
So, if we're on recommendations, I would suggest that we remove number two as a, as a considered, as a condition of approval.
And, well, one, it sounds like DPW has decided it's not required, but driveway, so a condition would be driveway permits to be obtained as required by.
Number two is recommend the applicant loam and seed the horse arena. I don't think we should require that as a condition of approval.
Okay. All right. Do, do any board members have any other comments on this application?
Barbara?
Tim?
So, where do we go with Jim's statement that if a business is not used for a period of two years, it becomes non-existent? Are we glossing over that, or are we, is the decision that, that, what are we doing with it?
Well, Tim, Tim, this is Jim, if I may, Barbara.
Go ahead.
I originally thought the applicant and was requesting, staff was recommending a waiver of site plan review. And as I understand now, they're not. They're asking for a waiver of certain items on the checklist, but this is, I don't know if this is properly noticed, as a, really a, an amendment to a previously approved site plan, but whether, whatever you call it, still a site plan review. So, my original concern, I think, was resolved by re-characterize, re-characterizing what we were doing. We are doing a site plan review, assuming it was properly noticed. We're just not requiring them to provide all the usual stuff that we provide, and we're entitled to waive those.
Well, if you read the, the notice, waiver of site plan review.
Well, that was my original concern. So, are we, sometimes we've taken poetic license with how the notices are phrased, if it encompasses the substance of what we're going to be addressing. I, I guess that's a, that's a question.
And the word amended site plan came from us, not from the applicant.
Well, it's on the checklist, if you look at their application for development review, who they plan amendment, they checked the conditional use permit up at the top.
Okay, yes, thank you, Jim.
It also says in the notice that the applicant is requesting a waiver of site plan requirements that would require a revised engineered site plan be submitted. So, I think that would cover it. Right, and there's this, this separate application for waiver is in there. Okay. So, I think that the first thing we need to address, board members, if we are inclined, is the request for waiver of section, if we're, if the board has no further comments on this, um, I am inclined to go forward with the waiver requests for the checklist, so we can get to the underlying plan and the conditional use permit. So, the first waiver would be section two B five for traffic study in regards to our consideration of the plan and the conditional use permit. Is there a motion to grant the waiver for the traffic study?
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion, Barbara.
Peters made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Tim has seconded it, is there any further discussion?
Barbara, we're waiving that with the understanding, this is Jim, that, um, we will be adding the condition that was previously suggested by Joanne on, you know, having a hook on this if it, if there is later a traffic issue, correct?
Correct, I'm understanding that the board will be reserving the right to request an amended site plan and/or a traffic study if traffic becomes an issue as determined by town staff.
Okay, and second, maybe Joanne can, in the technical review, did the police department review this? Did they give any comments?
Was police at TRC? I, they're normally there, but I can't say for sure if they were at this one.
I don't believe so.
No comments were received.
Okay.
They did, but, but even though they weren't at TRC, they did receive this application for review, so we.
They had the opportunity to review it and comment, and they chose not to?
Correct.
It says in the staff report.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Good, thanks.
All right. So, I have a motion and a second to grant the waiver for section two B five for the traffic study. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. The next item is section, a waiver request for section four, site plan specifications for plans and documents. Is there a motion?
Barbara, before we do that, my, my understanding is that the plan that was submitted as marked up, you know, it's sort of minimal markings up in red, will be part of the file. So, it will, it will document the, what we could characterize as fairly non-material changes to the previously approved site plan. But we can find that they're not sufficiently material to require a new one.
That's my understanding what we're doing.
Okay, but, but this will be part of the file, so it'll be in the, in the, whatever they call it, whatever Joanne keeps.
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Right, because it's pretty clear that our plan specs are a little different than what were required back in nineteen eighty-six.
Yeah. But I still, but I still use a fountain pen.
There's, there's no crayon on there.
All right, can I have a motion in regards to section four, subject to the condition that Jim just spoke about?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Jim, is it, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Tim, thank you. I'm going to call for the.
Anybody else at the meeting besides us?
Well, Peter's been chiming up a couple of times here. Um, I'm going to call for.
I'm listening, and I'm only, I just haven't heard anything that I don't disagree with or need more comment.
And it's, we got it, all right.
I agree with Kimberly.
Uh, well, okay. Vote on section four. Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. All right, next, and I'm going to take these two together, because this is really the same issue. Waiver request for section five in regards to assurances for completion and maintenance of improvements and section six, design standards and requirements for improvements. Does anybody agree to make that motion? David has stepped to the forefront to make that motion, is there?
I'll second.
And Gail is seconding it, all right. Is there any further discussion on those waiver requests? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. All right, the waiver requests have been granted in regards to this application. There is a conditional use permit request. Um, the conditional use permit criteria, um, the applicant has gone through, both in his letter and answering questions in regards to the fact that the daycare use is conditionally allowed in the agricultural district. Is there a motion in regards to the conditional use permit?
Motion to grant the conditional use permit based on the representations of the applicant.
Is.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the conditional use permit. Is there any further discussion on the conditional use permit?
Um, this is Jim, we, in our motion, we have to make those findings, so I'm going to amend the motion to incorporate the findings of those, those items, and then on that basis, grant the conditional use permit.
Thank you, I have to admit that I had mentally sort of looked at it and said, oh, Gail will put them in, so thank you for making it official.
Well, I was loosely saying that the representations, representations of the applicant were the answers to the questions, but thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no, the whole finding needs to be in there.
That it would cause practical difficulty.
Yeah, we'll go through, yeah, fifteen, four, one, four, one through six. Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right, so those have been approved. Um, so I think we Okay. Um, so the traffic flow signage is going to be on there, and we approved one of the waivers subject to the traffic issue coming back. Okay. So, is that it for that application?
Shouldn't that have been included in the motion? Because I can make a second, another motion to include those items.
That was, that was mentioned.
They were both.
You just, do you need a final vote to approve?
I don't think so, we've granted the waiver request, and we've granted the conditional use permit, so.
Okay.
Jim, unless I'm wrong, I think that's it for this, correct?
Well, we, we, we still have to grant site plan approval. I mean, we've granted waivers, but we have to do the, we have to conclude it, so.
With the conditions of approval.
We, we've granted waivers, but now, yeah, got the whole thing.
Okay.
So, so I think the, the motion would be we, we approve the amendment of our previously approved site plan as proposed, with the waivers as granted, and with the conditions that Joanne has spelled out, which we incorporate in the approval.
Is there a second?
Is that a motion?
She added on traffic.
Yeah. Just, as you've got them, three, one, one.
And two.
One driveway permit says required by DPW.
Yeah.
Two, traffic flow signage to be installed, as shown on the site plan of nineteen eighty-six. The standard thing in review, regards to review, and the requirement in regards to if there are traffic issues. Is there a second? Peter, did.
I'll second.
Yeah, I thought I heard you, Peter. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to call for the vote. Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
James? He made the motion, can I say he votes yes? We're going to skip him. Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Thank you for sitting through our confusion here tonight, I appreciate it. Okay. Um, the next item on our agenda is in regards to another request for relief of the outer fifty wetland surface water conservation district. This is in regards to map thirty-six, lot seventy-eight, seventy-nine, A dash O S. Completeness review request for relief. Um, this is to allow for drainage structures and associated improvements within that outer fifty-foot buffer along Glen Lake. The property owners are Joseph Morrell III, Mark and Joanne Gamache, Simone and Seville Semenides. Tried it, I don't know that I got that right, and the irrevocable trust. The properties are located at one seventy-eight Elm Street, map thirty-six, lot seventy-nine, one eighty Elm Street, map thirty-six, lot seventy-eight, and Elm Street, map thirty-six, lot A dash O S, zoned residential one, and wetland surface water conservation district overlay. This, is this application complete, Joanne, and is there a regional impact?
So, I just have a question, uh, whether or not this is complete. So, there are one, two, three, four. One, two, three, four owners of this open space project.
Signatures.
And there, the open space is basically along Elm Street, and then the other lots go, uh, they're connected, and they go, they all go down to the river. So, when the application came in, I noticed that they had not all signed the application. They did sign attachments, which were maintenance agreements, that they agreed with each other doing this work. However, we don't have an actual signature. Were, were you able to get?
I have one other one. Um, I have the, um, submit, I don't know how to pronounce it.
So, we're still missing.
We're still missing, um, the thirty-six, seventy-nine, uh, seven, uh, eighty. But through.
Thirty-six, eighty's not part of the, it's seventy-eight, seventy-nine. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
That, the, what I just gave you should be thirty-six, eighty-one.
Okay.
The neighbor who he has spoke with.
Okay. So.
But we have not received it, and they have signed the maintenance agreement, so they do know about the project.
Yes. So, I'm not sure how you want to handle that.
All right, so the, the issue, board members, before we accept this, is in regards to the signatures on the actual application, if I'm understanding this correctly. And we have some, but not all, even though the maintenance improvement agreement that we have, um, we have signatures from everybody.
Yes, we just don't have them on the actual application. I mean, or, or a letter stating that, that Jake has authority to represent them. So, I'm not sure if you are going to require that as part of this acceptance. I did have a discussion with Jake and said, we'll, we'll go to the meeting and, and see how they want to do this, so.
All right, so if you, just to help us understand who we have signatures for and who we don't, if, if you could just identify yourself for the record, and then if you could show us the site plan and exactly where is this open space area as compared to actually, who we have signatures from and who we don't.
Uh, my name is Jake Dorfler with Geo Insight. Um, so, the outlined box here down by the, by the lake is Joe Morrell's property. Um, the one above it is the shared lot, the O A O S, which is also shared with thirty-six, eighty-one and thirty-six, eighty. Um, we have signatures from his neighbor, um, the thirty-six, seventy-eight, and then, um, thirty-six, eighty-one, who's one of the other owners. And that, it's basically, it's just a lot that, I guess it was originally created, um, a long time ago, I guess, for an open space lot.
All right, and none of, all of the work is being done on Mr. Morrell's thirty-six, seventy-nine?
There.
And seventy-eight.
And seventy-eight.
Yeah, and seventy-eight, and, and A O S technically, that's.
But seventy-eight, we have a signature from.
Yes.
Yes.
And we have everybody's signature in regards to the maintenance agreement.
Correct.
But the, the open space, which is owned by all of them.
Owned by the, the three here, the seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-one.
We don't have all of the signatures for, because eighty is missing.
Okay. Do I have eighty on the maintenance agreement?
Yes.
Okay. So, board members, how do you want to proceed? Technically, we do not have signatures of everybody who has an interest in the open space, having signed it.
Normally, there's a, you know, a, uh, association, but in this case, we don't have that. So, that's why we ask that they all sign.
I'm chairman.
Yes, Peter?
Shouldn't we just table this until we have that document?
Tim?
Uh, I, I suggest since the, if the op, if all the property owners have signed the, the agreements, which, and particularly if the applicant's representative can represent that they've approved, we can go forward, but make our approval conditioned upon the signature of the, the missing applicant. Because it's, by signing the agreements, it, I think we can reasonably read those as a consent to the project. Uh, so I, I, but it won't be final until we have the, that signature. I just, I hate to send everybody home if they're all here tonight with everything.
Well, and they're here for the second time, so if we can address this, I'd like. Well, and they're here for the second time, so if we can address this, I'd like to address it. Tim, you had your hand up.
Jim said exactly what I was gonna say.
Excellent. All right, so as far as I'm concerned, we have a consensus from the board to continue. So Joanne, there's no regional impact?
There is none.
So, and the application is complete, absent the issue we just talked about?
Yes.
The motion that the app, the application is complete and ready for review and there's no regional impact.
Is there a second?
And just to add the subject, subject to the, you know, the subject to part that you had.
Subject to the owner's signature on any final documents.
Yep.
It's moved and seconded by Kimberly. Gonna call for the vote. Peter.
Yes.
Kimberly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Gail.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Joanne. What is this?
So this is a, a, another relief of the outer fifty feet of the wet, uh, surface water setback. They are on Glen Lake. They're on, the property is located on Elm Street. And they were doing some drainage work back in the early beginning, I think it was like January of twenty-twenty. More recently, they were contacted by DPW that they needed state and local permits, so they went through the process of state permits. And they're trying to install some drainage pipes because they're having an issue with the drainage running down towards the river impacting their property. So they've, they've come to an agreement with the neighboring lot, lot seventy-eight, where the plunge pool will be located on his lot in order to rectify this situation. Sarah's been more involved with this than I have, so I'm sure she can add more in-depth description of it.
And the Conservation Commission reviewed this?
Yes, they did, and they commented, they voted for in favor, two opposed, to recommend the impacts. And they did have a comment that the town, they feel that the town has, has failed to address the situation and that the commission feels that the town needs to ultimately address the drainage issues running into Glen Lake. They were sending a letter to the select board about that.
Tim.
One time we'd like to ask Sarah a question.
All right, well, actually, I was gonna go, before going to Sarah, I was just gonna say you all got a wetlands function and value report that was submitted. And the conclusion and acknowledge review of it. Kimberly, I'd like to hear what you thought of it. Kimberly, did you have a chance to look at it?
Yes, but I, I guess I, I have the first, I have a question. I'm, I'm seeing a note on the plan that says that the pipes and trash racks have already been installed up to the fifty-foot buffer. So essentially, this disturbance is already in place?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, the answer to that question, I did review the wetland function and values report, and I agree that it would be an improvement and not have a an impact on the functions and values of the outer fifty-foot buffer.
Okay. Sarah, have you, you've had a chance to look at this? We have a memo that was sent to you on October twenty-third, which was in response to some comments. What are your, what's your comment position on this application?
Yes, so we were notified about a violation coming from the state, actually. So he needed a shore land permit to do this work, and that's when DPW got involved as of twenty-twenty. But this project does have a history. The property owner, owner previously, years, in years ago, communicated that there were water issues from Elm Street onto his property. Asked if the town could do anything. I don't think he was met with a very good response. The town did not put any structures there to handle the water. So he installed drainage on his own property to take some of the water that was coming off of Elm Street and channelize it so that it wasn't running down his driveway and wasn't causing erosion. He was not given the best advice from DPW back in the day. Wasn't given all of the information, I should say. So he, I don't think he was aware that he needed approvals. He probably thought that when a DPW representative made a comment to him about what he should do, probably took that as approval. So I, I apologize on behalf of DPW for that confusion.
Sarah, you probably weren't even born yet, so it's all right. Go ahead.
So the work is done, but part of this application is to more fine-tune what was done and to make sure that it's approved so that he can get on with his life.
All right, so I saw the letter of October twenty-third where he sort of talked about things have been added to the plan, the maintenance agreement was submitted. At this time, given the current documents and the plan, do you have any issues with this application?
I, I do not.
Okay. All right, Tim.
So Sarah, I have a question for you. This is Tim.
Yes.
So I'm reading the plan. It shows there's a drainage easement with existing drainage pipe in an easement. Does that drain function at this time? The town drain?
We do not, no.
You don't know?
The, the end of the pipe was previously, that we do inspections on the outlet, was previously under this, this owner's neighbor's dock. That dock has since been moved and we found that that pipe was partially crushed. So unsure, we are unsure of how far that damage goes up.
My question for you is, in the event that the town decides to take action and improve that drainage system from the two catch basins on Elm Street, you're allowing them to build a plunge pool level spreader on top of your pipe in, within the drainage easement? How do you propose to do any work in there with that plunge pool level spreader in the town's drainage easement?
So we did talk about it and given that the work was already, the work is already done, the pipe's already in, to minimize the disturbance, we felt like we could live with a plunge pool because a plunge pool is basically a depression with stone in it, and we felt like it would be easy for the town to reset that if we were to temporarily dig it up and move it to do our work, that it wouldn't be hard to reset that versus if we had him install a structure or something, it would cause a much bigger disturbance in that sensitive area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sarah on this application? All right, having said that, the applicant already sort of described it and I'll turn it back over to the applicant if he wants to address anything or talk about the application further.
I don't, I don't have a whole lot to say, except I can, I just reiterate a little bit on some of the, like, the treatment that we are. Originally, when Joe put this device in, it was there, it was a shallower device, roughly two feet to thirty inches in depth. And that was just basically the, and it had a wall in it to, to stop the flow and collect any glass or debris or anything like that that might come down, which he, he states has been, has been a problem in the past. He's always picking up glass from the beach prior to any of this installation. We, we are proposing to make it deeper to allow for more settling of any sediment that might come down off of Elm Street. An actual design, like baffle system, to have water, you know, once it reaches a certain elevation, to then spill over into the downstream pipe. I just wanted to clarify that we are, he's going to, you know, adjust what he has there in place now and
Okay.
And it should, it should work really well.
All right, any other questions from the board? If there aren't any, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. All right. At this time, I'm gonna open the matter up for public comment. This is an application in regards to work being done in the outer fifty of the hundred-foot wet, wetland surface water conservation district in the area of one seventy-eight to one eighty Elm Street. This is map thirty-six, lots seventy-eight and seventy-nine. There's nobody present here in the room today from, tonight, from members of the public. Joanne, is there anybody online for public comment? All right, seeing no members of the public, I'm going to close the public hearing.
If I may, I also, I forgot to mention earlier, we did receive the shore land permit approval, so.
Oh, you do have that, okay.
If you don't already have a copy.
We don't.
Not sure if they send it to you or not.
No, I'll see.
Not independently. We, we wouldn't get it as planning board members.
I'll send that out.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Or Joe has a copy of it right here. Mine's not, my home printer's not exactly the greatest.
Okay, Joanne will put that in the file. Board members, are there any issues or questions that you have in regards to this application?
Barbara, this is Jim. I'm just being conservative. I, I, I don't want anything in this record to be deemed an admission by the town by having done anything wrong. I mean, water will drain downstream. And I know Sarah's comment suggested they were given not complete advice, but I, I I don't see anything beyond that that necessarily implicates the town. It was downstream from a road. So I have no objection to this. I just, just don't want it, I don't want the record to suggest that the town is admitting any, any liability.
Thank you. Gail will make sure that's in the record. All right. If there are no outstanding issues, Tim.
So we conditioned the approval on the signature from the missing link. However, the applicant has already completed all the work in the outer fifty feet. So in the event that the missing link objects to this and doesn't want it to happen, which probably won't happen, how do you perceive to handle it? Since it's already in place and it's done.
Barbara, this is Jim.
Go ahead.
I, I suggest we let them come back in and then we'll deal with it then.
As a, as a subsequent.
By then, Sarah will have thought of some clever solution.
Thank you.
This is what happens when we have these multi-owner open space areas.
Ready for motion?
Yes, Tim.
Motion to grant the relief from the outer fifty feet of the hundred-foot wetland surface water conservation district. Condition that they obtain the signature from lot eighty, thirty-six dash eighty, which is missing from the file. That's it.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second it.
Peter has seconded the motion. David, I just didn't see your arm quick enough, David. Is there any further, Joanne?
Could you, would you consider adding?
Sure.
All drainage agreements shall be recorded in conjunction with this approval?
All, I'd like to amend my motion to state that all drainage agreements need to be amended.
Recorded.
Recorded?
Shall be recorded. Sorry, I, I should have.
In conjunction with this approval.
Shall be recorded in conjunction with this approval.
I'll second that amendment.
All right, it's, the motion as amended has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. Peter.
Yes.
Kimberly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Gail.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
They did not include into the, into our notice that they received a, a notice of decision from the ZBA for the outer, for the, for the first fifty, right? We never mentioned that as part of the record.
They still have to go to the ZBA.
No, no, we, they voted and they.
Yeah, no, we have approval of it.
They gave us a notice of decision in our packet.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, no, they have it, but that'll be part of the.
But it should be included as part of the record, please.
Correct. Right. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, board members, I'm sorry to keep you, but we have a couple items that were at the beginning of the meeting that we have not addressed. One of the things we got in our packet to be addressed was the October twenty-second minutes. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Motion to be approved as presented.
Tim has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Peter seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Peter.
Yes.
Kimberly.
I'm saying I was not there.
James.
Yes.
Gail, you were an alternate that meeting, right? Both of you were voting. Gail.
Yes.
David.
Yes, yes.
Tim votes yes and the chair votes yes. We had a previous request for a recommendation to the select board to build on a private road. This was map twenty-four, lot thirty-eight, Andre Street. We had heard this at the November fifth meeting. We had a bunch of questions about what the applicant was proposing to do. If you might recall, this was essentially raising a building and we weren't sure whether we were adding a floor, adding living space. The application seemed very unclear. Joanne, I understand that you've got more information for us on this, but we don't actually have anything else in our packet. Is that correct?
Correct. I was just going to provide you with the verbal update that I received from the owner.
Okay.
So there were questions about whether he was going to add, uh, raise the roof and build a second story. He's not raising the roof. What he's doing is he's raising the lower level of the split to turn it into a ranch, so the front door would be raised by four feet. Because he's had problems with flooding in that area, he's basically just trying to get the lower level of the house up higher. It's only a one-bedroom. The square footage of the foundation is only seven hundred and four feet. He's not making any changes to the septic as the bedrooms will not be increasing. The property is not connected to sewer. That was another question. And the only other thing he mentioned was the only, the only reason he's doing any of this is due to the flooding in that, down in that area that they've had. So the select board are looking to review this and make a recommendation at their, I believe it's their next meeting.
So he's not really building anything. He's taking the structure that's there and essentially raising it to eliminate the bottom floor, which is flooding.
And he was built, the, the reason he came in in the first place was because he was building the deck.
Off the side.
Right.
But the, okay.
But the deck's still part of the project?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, I don't think I have any issues with that as it's explained. It just was very confusing as it came in. Ed, board members, anybody else?
I have no problem. So are we gonna make a recommendation or, or no comment?
I don't, I, if somebody's, wants to improve a property by getting the lower level out of the flood area, I frankly am in favor of it because it's, it creates a better situation. And people do, well, are not gonna move out of town there. We've been through that a number of times in this town in regards to people not living there, so.
Would you like a motion? Would you undo it by a verbal or how you?
Well, no, it probably ought to be a, a motion to, to recommend.
Make a motion to recommend a favorable answers to the request to raise the house up to avoid the water problems at map twenty-four, lot thirty-eight, Andre Street.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Peter.
I'm saying.
Kimberly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Gail.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
That's it.
Joanne, do we have anything, oh, the visions?
The master plan.
The Southern New Hampshire Planning would like to hear back on the vision statement. You got emailed something I had done. You got emailed changes by David. Does anybody have any further changes to the changes that Dave made?
This is Kimberly. I, I, I suggest that we change man-made to human-made or anthropomorphic.
What was that last one?
Anthropomorphic. I struggled over it. We, we don't tend to use it as much anymore. It's a big word.
I, I'm not putting anthropomorph, that's like reading a George Will column. Everybody will have to look it up. We need to come up with something else. What's the problem with man?
Funny that you said that. I always see those words. I have to look those words up whenever. Funny that you said that, I always see those words, I have to look those words up when I read George Will.
We, we get beat up on them for using them in public documents, so, uh, human-made is the one that we get suggested by federal agencies as a replacement.
Oh, for God's sake.
Why, because man-made is sexist?
Uh, yeah.
Person made.
Okay, human-made it is, then. That we're changing the word man-made to human-made?
Well, then I object to resources, because obviously, it's so objectionable, it shouldn't be included as a resource, included by natural resources and structures. I'm being, I just can't even. Is that what we're talking about, structures? I mean, I guess now that I'm looking at it, if we're it's natural resources and structures, right? That's really what we're talking about.
So, is this being changed, or?
So, let's just change the word and go home.
All right, so, consensus, what do we want to change man-made to?
Human-made.
Who votes, who wants human-made, speak up?
No.
I will, I'll vote for that.
No.
I do.
I'll vote for that if we can go home.
That's what I said, Jim.
It's too awkward, it's too awkward. I don't think it needs to be changed.
Yeah, I'm not-
What are our options?
Man-made or whatever Kimberly said? Human-made?
Man-made.
Unless we don't get sued.
As in mankind, not, you know, not man versus woman.
Well, I hear the word humankind a lot, too.
Oh, Lord, I can't take this at twenty of ten.
Can we, can we continue this to further meeting?
No, let's just send it to, let's send it to, to Southern New Hampshire Planning, and it'll be in it, in it for our public hearing.
So, leave it at man-made?
Just leave it and send it to the public hearing, because it's too late for us to digest this change so that it's not awkward, and we can all understand it. Kimberly, I like the word, but I just can't put it in a document right now, I mean, maybe after public comment, we will. All right, so, that's all we really needed to know was to what to do with the vision statement, any further changes, and send it along. Any, anything else from any other board members?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that's a roll call, I just heard Peter, Kimberly, James, Gail, David, Tim, and myself say yes, goodbye. And Jim, if you're still at the office, have a safe drive home, good night, everybody.